Exactly.
I don't think they.
Yeah, I think.
Well, there's part of the antidote.
Can you do that?
Yeah, there's a, there's a.
Part of the antidote in a state just as.
I think so.
In most of the world, and then I take some of them.
Do you have anything?
Well.
Well, it was all designed around farming.
And saving campus.
And saving, yeah.
Right.
Have some of the. Okay, I got six o'clock. All right. I'm gonna call the village board meeting of Black Earth, uh, Tuesday, November seventh at six P M to order. Roll call, please. Jerry Moyer? Here. James Foyle?
Here.
Scott Patsch?
Here.
Taylor Siro?
Here.
Daryl? Calvin Osten?
Here.
Emmett Toppin?
Here.
Here.
We got you. We got you.
Okay.
Thanks. To the legion.
To the legion, to the flag.
Flag. America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, good. Good harmony.
That was a lot. Okay, proof of posting. Copy of the notice was delivered to the following on November sixth, emailed to the Star News, Lakewood Bank, in Black Earth, posted the Black Earth Municipal Building, Black Earth Post Office, and the Black Earth webpage. Public comment. You have a public.
Hello. We do have a public today. Uh, clothes rolled down, everybody knows what's, you know, as far as behind Quick Trip.
Can you just say your name and address, please?
Burmine House, uh, five, four, six, seven County Highway up. We've had a lot of problems just with having UPS and Amazon, I've been driving down the road. We've been fighting it, trying to get everybody else to sort of organize. I know that we came towards trying to get the road basically totally wiped out as far as getting rid of Main Street completely. Uh, some of the changes I'd like to sort of see haven't really happened. I know it's sort of been tabled kind of a thing. Uh, I guess overall, what it is, we need to figure something out because I'm liable for that bridge when people cross. And I don't get anything from the Sheriff's Department, Dean County, the village, or the township. Nobody seems to help and I am no better than anybody else when you walk away from here, you're a peon to Google and everybody else. You cannot get them to do anything. So, as an authority, as far as being somebody, you within Sheriff's Department be able to bring something up. What's gonna happen here is Channel Three has their little thing that sort of helps people through, you know, some of these problems. You will get thrown under the bus as far as that goes. That, when that comes up, because if I can't get anything else going, we were thinking, you know, because the Sheriff's Department tried, zoning's tried, uh, you guys, I don't know how far it's gone as far as it goes over the township. But as far as it goes, I don't want to have you guys say, well, we don't know nothing about this. If and when I take the time to do it, because I, my wife says, you do it, not me. Uh, sort of leaves it at that point, but um, i- it's just, uh, everybody knows, and you know, a lot of you guys know the inducements that I've got going on. We got a posted two-ton bridge. There's people across that bridge, and you ask them, do you understand what two-ton mean? Uh, you know, no. Well, what is, what is two-ton? You know, hopefully, everybody here understands it, but there's actually literally drivers that have no clue. And they say, well, this van isn't two-ton, you know, and then that's sort of bull, because an average car is just barely under two-ton.
Right.
So, but, uh, the situation across the bridge, and like I say, you know, the Sheriff's Department came up, well, why don't you gate it? Well, you wanna gate it down to your driveway? You know, it's, it's, we drive through there all the time with equipment and everything else, you know. Okay, I crossed the bridge with more than two-ton, but when I've got to post it, the best I can post it, you know, type of property. Somewhere, somehow, I gotta get some help on it. I was hoping that we could get rid of all of Main Street, and that's sort of been sitting there pretty quietly, I guess, as far as what I've seen so far. Which I understand nobody wants to jump real quick, but.
Well, there's, there's some very, very, um, holdbacks on that. Man, you know what I'm talking about?
Just talking, stuff like that.
And there's nothing to do about that. That cannot be changed.
Isn't there a way, though, that we could?
Get rid of Main Street?
Just make sure that Main Street's not listed there anymore, say, we are.
That's kind of what we decided to do, right?
Well, we have to do it as a board, so that we can then inform Google that there's, there's not F Street's up there anymore, but I do know too.
That's not gonna stop us from coming the other direction, no. Well, see, in Google, in Google, on maps is the problem, because if you Google it, it shows it on Google. Somehow, someway, somebody's gotta get to Google and say, that's it? And I, I would, I don't care if one-twenty mains are our address, and one-twenty fours are neighbors up in Hillside, was asking this house. They both can go to, uh, a center street address.
So, this is predominantly a GPS?
Well, the GPS probably completely, because every driver says, my GPS shows it.
All right.
We had some people come down and look at equipment, and they came to the bridge, and he's a truck driver, and he says, oh, hell no, I ain't crossing two-ton. He's smart enough, but these other drivers, they're just the drivers.
Well, they have Google spots where people drive right down dirt roads with semis, because that's where Google's telling them to go.
Right.
It's.
Right.
I've also seen cars on their Google, come on a Quick Trip and go that way.
There's people that know there's a shortcut to get over Highway up, and they use.
Well, yeah.
But at that point, you know, it's, some people, you know, I look the other way, but overall, it's likely, you gotta try and stop all of them. It, it's just one of those things with the whole idea of an after, and I, I haven't sat in front of you guys and said anything, you know. I, I'm, I'm seriously, I have lost it with a few drivers already, because they sort of get cocky back at me, but, you know, I, I just don't need to end up having some serious problems, but I would seriously like to, somehow, whether we can legally get things done, but, you know, get rid of Main Street as a name and get some help through Google. I don't know how you do it, but it's getting down to the point where going to Channel Three now, it seems to be like, they do a lot of things. This would be a fun one to see what they can come up with, but it does throw you guys under the bus.
Not really.
No, it's not, yeah.
It's legally, Main Street is a road, and that's our problem.
Yeah.
And, but it's legally a road. And it doesn't really throw us under the bus, because beyond that is not, and a half of it's in the township.
Right.
It doesn't really throw us under the bus.
So, what, is there something that we can do as a village to pass some type of, I don't know, some, something that we can say, Main Street is no longer?
Even if we get rid of the road, even if we decide to take it off.
Should we vacate it?
Yeah, even if we vacate it, will Google get that information?
May not. They haven't the other side of it.
No, because, yeah, the whole road's down there. Right.
And the other side of the road's been vacated forever.
Forever.
But they still put at that point, I guess, wouldn't we question that at one time, somebody said, and I wanted to say it was, uh, um, what's her name, the last?
Charlie.
No, uh, the sheriff, uh, what's her name?
Me.
Me. She said, she goes, the problem we have is that, you know, there's still part of that road there, and she goes, we need to get rid of it. And that's when we started going to the point that we need to get rid of the, Main Street does not exist in Black Earth anymore.
But they should go out county GPS mapping.
Right.
The county shows it proper.
Well, the county, well, does it, because the county, the county shows that my property line is right through my house.
Yeah, but I mean, it shows that road proper. It shows the road proper.
And they already said that they weren't gonna update that side of the town for two years.
Yeah.
Right.
But it shows the road proper.
That, like you said, our part is, you know, as we've been through the fight all along, trying to figure the thing out, it's like, you know, if I go to Channel Three or whatever, see how good, you know, how lucky I can be with them, what they come up with.
Well, it doesn't guarantee that they do anything either, so it doesn't necessarily solve your problem.
It's just saying that, you know, through our problems, I am gonna say, Dean County Sheriff's Department's in it. You know, all four identities that are as close as they are, because none of us are any better than anybody. When you go to Google, they're like, we're a big company. Who the hell are you?
Right.
You know?
Yeah, I agree.
So, it just sort of leaves you dangling, and it's just like, well.
Well, the only thing that would stop it would be some type of remote for you to not have to get out of a, a vehicle. You know, and a gate that, that comes and closes behind you. I, I mean, that's.
Well, as a start, we could, we could not, I'm, I'm not so sure we can vacate Main Street as is, because of some of the way that, some of the property goes. And with the property being given as the way it was, it's pretty restricted.
But that portion should have already been done, that's why that property shows that it's.
It should have been badly dotted originally. Right.
So, that's why that jump in from the Cooper property did happen, because, uh, Cooper, Cooper's family own that, and the part across the bridge.
Yeah, that's, that's how it got that way. Right. That's legally how that happens, when you vacate. But now, that was given to us through groundswell, and it's deed restricted.
Right.
You can't do any.
That street, that part.
No, it's not.
It was wet anyway.
But what I mean is, you can't get rid of that, you know.
Is there anybody we can contact?
They, they have tried over time.
Everybody's tried.
Yeah.
And it's just one of those things that.
I think we could make Main Street not a street, and at least put a large posting on our site. And you could say to Google, hey, this isn't a street, I mean.
Until Google gets it. That's our, and I can't get anywhere with anybody, anyhow, in that point, but if Main Street never, I guess, one address that really, really would love to see changed, because they do get a lot of, because of my neighbors at one-twenty-four, is what it, what it, would it take to be able to change their address to center street at least? Whether we, let's try that one.
Like a delivery address to center street.
Right.
Right. Now, the only problem, I think, is.
Township, though. That one, one hour and one twenty.
Right. The only reason they got changed to what it is, is because of the ambulance response and fire response.
So, could those be changed to a center street address, even though they're in the township?
It could, as long as the homeowner wanted it.
Which I know the neighbors, we've discussed, they feel bad, because most of the, all of them just go to that. They're like, you know, well.
That's because they're the only ones on Main Street.
Right. That'd be, that's the only house on Main Street that's living.
Anyway, this is a change on the agenda, right?
Yeah, this is way off public comment, so we will take it under advisement. We will be in touch, and then at some point that we have some action, we'll put it on the board, the agenda item.
Yeah, like you said.
Okay.
Even though, I know me and Matt, Matt and.
Yes, we will, for sure.
Yeah, we'll try to get it done, Burr.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention, again.
Keep it going, thank you, guys.
Thanks for the turn. Yep. Okay. Uh, number five, discussion, action, approval of meeting minutes from October third, October seventeenth, and October twenty-fifth. They were included in the packet.
I move approval.
I have a motion by Mitch, a second by Sarah. Sarah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion and action, operator license applications for Kayla Okano, which is a new license, and Valbeer Kaur, who is a new renewal. I believe both applications in, and I'm assuming they've met all criteria for dual, and are eligible for approval. I would entertain the motion.
I would ma- make a motion to approve both applications.
A second. Motion by Scott, a second by Pam. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Do you have a comment, the other person? Um, none of them have the driver's license out there, or they looked up for, do we need to have that information?
Please, we're checking, please.
It's still not on the application, so it needed to be, neither one of the drivers.
If we do police. If we do police background checks, I don't even know why it's on, I don't even know why we need the, need it on the application.
Okay. Sorry about that. Any other discussion? I think we already voted, so we're good. Um, number seven, discussion and action, resolution twenty-three dash oh-seven, carryover of twenty-two funds. This was discussed at the last.
Yep.
Budget meeting. We do the formal resolution. Carryover among, report was in your packet.
Yep. I make a motion that, uh, we do the carryoff, carryover funds from twenty-two resolution, twenty-three dash oh-seven.
I have a motion by Mitch, a second, a second by Sarah. Any discussion? Very none. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number eight. Invoices to be paid, that again was in your packet. One thing to note would be the street sweeper is in here, um, and that was, I have a sponsor for somebody who don't want to, our base not to pay for it. That's the hundred and thirty-seven thousand item, yeah.
I move for approval of the invoices to be paid.
A motion by Scott?
A second.
Second by Mitch. Questions or discussion? What was the big orange repair?
Um, just, uh.
Big one?
Regular repairs to our plow truck.
Okay.
I went down to Monroe, and it still needs a bunch of work, but we just did what we could with the funds we had.
Okay. Thank you. The painter lady, I know that was the last meeting, did we talk about something else happened to be looked at?
Yes, it was just a number.
But that was all resolved, and that number's a good number, okay. Any other questions or concern? Very none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number nine, the ATV, UTV ordinance.
Yeah, this, uh, this was brought up, I asked to be have it put on the board. Um, we discussed it, uh, briefly at the last meeting on things to go forward. They'd like us to change the UTV ATV route times to ten P M from nine, to correspond with when they open the county roads, so it's all the same times.
So, does it have to be only changed?
Yep.
Changing from nine to ten P M.
Yeah. Somebody coming off a county road, ain't driving into somebody who's got a different time zone.
Yep.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Pam?
Second.
Second by Sarah. Any questions?
Are there any other changes? I didn't know if any of the streets or names or anything else.
So, it's only changed to number E five, that lots are gonna be open from seven A M to now ten P M. No questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion. Number ten, discussion, action of twenty-one to no borrowing and budget twenty-four.
I have an updated borrowing sheet in the packet, where all of the ethicals, ones we've entered into.
Yeah.
The committed amounts, and one sees anything. All the funds are still in the vested account except for the one thirty-seven, which I have from the. And updated that, um, for budget, kind of financial stuff. Um, there's some changes that were made, I highlighted in the, um, like in my first page, I adjusted the dog license revenue up slightly just from April last year, or this year. And then, um.
Thank you, update election one-two, because of the four elections in twenty-two.
I highlighted that just as a, if you wanna discuss that, then at, um, meeting on the twenty-first. Other than that, we have about thirty-one and a half thousand that we need to need to cut, or if we're not going to cut, then it would be, if they tax rate.
So, the, the ten thou- ten thousand six hundred.
Yes, that was the.
And maybe just the nine thousand for Northwest Dane, hundred for Fly Dane, what is that?
The Fly Dane was that, um, mapping, the, the county wanted the commitment.
Oh, and we did that, right?
Yeah.
And then the fifteen hundred for the gateway, gateway.
That was an option.
We did that too, yeah, okay. Thank you. The stuff we took out of the budget for public works, we talked about putting in the G O note. Do we need to move that to proposed?
Uh, so like the Red Hawk is in the, it is, do you want that?
Um, Red Hawk was in there, but we took, um, for, Matt, help me out, what did we take out of the budget for you that we were gonna put in G O? Well, the one where we were designated for ARPA, I see that you have. That was, yeah, that was the mower. That was the mower, yeah.
RIPS subdivision, the lawnmower, and Red Hawk.
Thank you. And so, you moved Red Hawk all the way up?
Mower's not indicated though.
Mower was.
ARPA, right?
Yeah, ARPA.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did we, the forty thousand for the stream monitoring system, did we actually commit that, or? Over five years. Over five years, okay. And we put generators in there too.
From the last discussion, I think that's what.
Yes. Right?
Yeah. We, we were designating it.
Yeah. I thought there was something else from, I thought there was one of those things.
From where?
From Public Works, the painting on the floor, sidewalk stuff.
Just the Vanguard building, like the.
Yeah, that was something we've talked about, was doing heat, I mean, I'm sure the.
Oh, which was that?
Cause I thought. I don't have a price on it, I just threw thirty thousand out there.
Thirty, okay, yeah, and that was it. Cause I was gonna say, I thought when we, we talked that budget last, we were at roughly seventy thousand remaining in G O, so. Yeah, so that's.
Right, so I'm not looking at the winner.
Um, that we hadn't talked about.
Would we actually borrow money now for a forty thousand dollar commitment of eight thousand dollars a year? Would that, I mean, is that right way to do it? I don't think so, right?
What are you talking about?
So, we got the stream monitoring and the G O note, we committed to, to doing it, if everybody else goes on, but wouldn't that be a budget item every year?
Yeah.
Or not a G O note borrowing?
You put it to eight.
Eight thousand over five years.
Um, I think we gotta put eight in here on the G O note, because the budget's kind of.
We could put thirty-two back into, we could put thirty-two back in. The remaining amount, right?
I, I think it should be, I don't think we should borrow for the, for the.
Cause that can be a budgeted item over the next four years.
Yeah, that was. Um, Mitch, I, I assume that was you saying that, and that was my understanding too, was that we were gonna use eight from the G O note, and then budget, put it in the budget, moving forward after that.
Yes. Okay, so then, let's go back again, this hundred and five thousand, I know I'm repeating myself, I know I am. The electric substation of a hundred and five, that's to make it home?
Let's make it home, yes.
Does that please you?
I'll be happy.
Okay. Just checking, that's all you're getting, no. Right? Maybe.
I'll be happy. And to go along with that, I think we're gonna come in under budget.
Well, good.
So, that leaves us a hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand.
I swear, we committed more. Hundred and ninety thousand? And there was another project.
I think we're kind of guessing numbers, though, based on what we're writing down.
But I, I'm just thinking, because we took it out of the budget to put it in G O, I don't wanna lose sight of anything that we said that we were going to set up. And I know that the, the shop repair, whatever, wasn't that, we just said we could take that out. Mm-hmm. Cause it would improve or extend, right? Mm-hmm, and there were some safety issues with the.
Yeah, the money disoring.
Great. The grate.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're still thirty-one thousand.
Well, we just put thirty-two back in, because.
To G O, what?
Into G O.
Oh, yeah, but not in G O.
Not as a general budget, yeah.
So, Danny, what happens if we, then we just have, we have to do a tax increase? But we haven't done a tax increase in, I'm gonna say, four, before here.
You got your revaluation coming, so you will have tax increases, I'm guessing.
But we haven't, we haven't done it from budget.
Certain residents, but not overall, your valuation, your mill rate, and is all.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't automatically get more money from it.
So, I wanna say last year.
No, I, I understand that, I get it.
Last year, our taxes actually, on the village side, went down slightly.
Yep.
And I want, the year before, if they were not the same, they went down a little bit. I mean, I know the schools are in there, and that's, people are, take that as kind of not the right way. But what would thirty-one thousand do to our population?
It would be, uh, Brian, something over, um, out.
Can we do that, though?
You can extend up to there.
Okay.
Which would be.
Everybody gets a. Right. We don't wanna do that. But I'm thinking, if we have thirty-one thousand dollars, and we have thirteen hundred people that is going to affect.
On the assessment of a hundred and twenty thousand, you said it would be about a hundred and forty dollars.
Whoa.
Agreed.
You want a hundred thousand?
I mean, that's not.
A hundred thousand. So, it's, it's.
It's pretty succinct, so.
Yes.
I have a question. And you were gonna look into, I missed this already, did, did that?
Yeah, to see if that could switch over.
Was that able to move to the G O note, or would that have to stay in our budget?
Oh, it's still in there, but that should drop that way down then.
Yes, right.
That should be like six, seven thousand.
Way. Simple planning.
Well, we just rolled over, um, some money for ballpark supplies, uh, forty-five hundred bucks, so I think we could probably take twenty-five hundred for twenty-two.
Well, if you take thirty-five plus that, you're, you're a bugger.
What? I have those numbers for the next meeting, when I have carryover moved into this one, number two.
But if we take the thirty-five, right, uh, or put it here, take it out of here.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
We're, we're squared away.
Yeah. So, emergency management.
Now, with that being said, should we do a little thing, and start putting it in funds for equipment replacement? So, we're not stuck in this boat, all, you know, the state allows us to borrow money and put it against there, but you're never ahead. I don't, I, I thought a lot about this, I don't, there's no way to fix that.
But we do, we do still have that, almost a hundred and ninety thousand in G O.
Yep.
For what? I'm just saying, instead of extending the budget for equipment, maybe we do some of those purchases under G O versus.
Well, I'm thinking long-term even purchases, right? Large purchases.
Right.
Plow trucks, mm.
Like a vehicle replacement fund.
Yeah.
Okay, but we still have to.
We have a lot of streets that need to, maybe that's what we can.
They're these, like five hundred dollars, we'd have to.
We have to find five hundred dollars.
Well, we'd have to cut five hundred dollars from this current, because the municipal planning wasn't taken up, line number forty-eight was still in there for municipal planning, for view victory.
And we did confirm that we can do that under. We can put that into the G O.
Yep. And it's in there.
And it's in there, and it's in there, you're saying, okay. So, then we need five hundred, so let's take five hundred dollars out of the economic development and drop that to ninety-five hundred. We are carrying over sixteen. So, if we drop that to, even if we dropped it to nine.
Yeah, drop it to.
Take it out of the carryover.
Take it to nine, yeah. Right.
Plan with numbers.
Right, but, yeah. We don't have a huge plan for economic development spending this year.
Signs, signs maybe.
The signs that we're, but, which we're gonna decrease.
Shut up, Matt.
I am gonna, I'm gonna kick you dude.
Wouldn't be the first.
And if we were recorded. If we were recorded. So, you're saying drop line fifty-five economic development, drop it to nine? Yes, please.
Ninety-five.
No, she said nine, we're just gonna take it down to nine.
Oh, she said ninety-five.
Well, I did, but then it's just gonna drop it to. Just drop it to nine, because we're carrying sixteen. That puts us in, and then we're, yeah. And do we have any updates on the police contract?
Uh, that'll be later.
Okay. So, yeah.
Have we contacted them? Yeah. How's that going?
It'll be later.
Okay.
Don't get out here. Can I say it any other way? Can you try it one more time? Um, did you actually call?[1768.41]
Oh, you met later in the meeting. Never mind, I just.
Uh, okay, so are we good to go for, and our next meeting is set up for?
November twenty-first, I think it's a little bit.
Yep. We did that, right? We did that before, already set that date, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's at five-thirty and we're all to be present?
Five-thirty?
Okay.
Are we drawn to us?
I'll be drawn.
Okay.
You have to run the meeting.
Yeah, you don't have to.
And if, if you're not, make S to be, can we make him do it?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Okay. Um, any other discussion or questions on the budget or the GO no bar? Do we have to like make a motion to pass any of that, no?
Well, it was good, okay.
Cause you're all on.
Cause it was already set aside for it, so.
Okay, we'll go into the committee report. Vanguard Commission.
Vanguard Commission, Peter and I met last week to, uh, review Sean. Sean's review was yesterday, we have a meeting tomorrow night. And, uh, everything's going along well, anybody's got any questions?
Any questions for Scott? We're right into then we'll go into, uh, Sean's report, electrical superintendent report.
So the biggest thing I got is, as of today, you guys got a new substation transfer. So that showed up unloaded in position, um, we just gotta basically install the bushings and there'll be a guy comes and runs some tests on it to make sure all the shipping and everything went well, so it's pretty exciting, so.
Nice.
Reynolds, uh, uh, transfers one that delivered it and unloaded it, uh, an excellent job. Um, other than that, just kinda trying to get the last of services in before Frost.
Last night there was a power outage.
Yeah. Yep.
It made me blink. How, it only made me blink, yeah, cause I'm only blank at my house, but.
Yep.
So there were some people out there, we're for like, what, forty-five minutes you said you were out?
Tops.
What happened?
Right outside the substation, one of the switches, so it comes underground, out of the sub, risers up and feeds overtime, it kinda scrawls out from there while there's a switch basically where it feeds out and overtime, there's a spring on the top of it that holds the door closed, that spring failed, broke, opened up that door, so basically they just had to change out the switch and.
And you put it on your list to check that from Ellen, is that something?
Check it from down.
We can't, I can't open it up, otherwise everybody's gonna be out. It's just one of those things, it's just a.
It's a failing repair.
I've seen it thermal with.
I've been, I've been in line work for almost many years now, and I've never seen a spring break and it cut out.
Well, leave it to Black Earth.
I had to break into my own house.
You guys are one of a kind.
Huh? You did, you went into my own house cause I couldn't get in the garage?
So even a, even a thermal scan wouldn't catch on.
All those fruit things, I don't, I think maybe it was the, the change of weather.
I thought it was the wind, cause the wind was so strong last night. And I got a spectrum notification at the same time, but.
Ours was just, ours was just off the back end.
Yeah, ours was too, yeah, but there were parts of Mill Street and part of.
He was on the right side of the track. I do.
Center, there were out, out.
Yeah. There's a piece of equipment on your substation called a repo, everyone would see the fault, it'll actually like de-energize the she had to shut the entire line, close to the back end, um, basically just to basically keep continuity and keep. They saved like three times, might not have been out.
Um, probably don't wanna say that to the person that was caught in the elevator at the nursing.
I heard that, yeah, so.
Like three times. On my pocket.
I'm feeling it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Well, yeah, frost charges start coming in December first, um, or whenever we have a large one frost, hopefully we don't have that for us, so.
Thanks Sean, uh, Black Earth Fire, we have not met since our last meeting, but we do meet this Thursday at six-thirty. Uh, quick treasure and financial report.
Obviously lots of meetings this one, um, working on budget stuff and looks to be called tonight, so that's good. Next meeting on the twenty-first.
Okay, any questions for Danny?
Is this where I can ask about Civic?
Yep.
Um, I know that, you know, we get the, we get the reports and I don't, but they're not always as readable as like seeing a financial statement, right? A spending income statement or really more of a balance sheet, where the checking accounts are at, where our liabilities are at. Are we getting any closer in Civic to getting those financial statements?
That.
Okay.
Kind of with me last week.
Okay, I just, yeah, okay.
It was scheduled in September and then utility disconnections, that kinda start going on, getting that whole process set up and then all the just all that kinda stuff, so it kinda got.
I thought maybe it was after, you know, after that, I thought we had, that Civic was gonna actually have send to check out to help make sure all those things had transferred over and were changed and, okay.
Okay, okay. Oh, thank you Danny, any other questions? Uh, Dana Iowa, wastewater commission report, Jane.
Uh, we met, uh.
What happened to?
Nineteenth. Um, just approved bills, we extended the, uh, hiring of a new person, out another month. Trying to get more applicants, um, discharge violations, everything's good, we meet, um, on the sixteenth at six-thirty PM.
What kind of, what kind of credentials do you have to have for that job?
So since we have a lab person, we don't have to look for a lab person, so basically
Is it just like an office?
Just out of high school or double or any.
To run it.
To run it.
Stop.
Oh, to run it?
Yeah.
Oh, they have.
I mean, so they're looking for the director, what kind of?
No, they're, they're got a director.
The director is all. Oh, I heard, I know you guys are hired by, okay.
And now we're looking for.
I saw the ad today in the paper.
Just a green employee, just.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, cause you know.
Go for it Pam.
Yeah.
You can do it.
No, I'm nervous, I have, no, I do, I, I just didn't know what kind of ridiculous case you have to have for that.
High school diploma.
Yeah.
With twenty-five pounds.
You promoted the one into the director role and then you're replacing actually his kind of position, yeah.
That's the hard part.
Yeah, basically just a, yep.
Yep, okay. All right, and you said your next meeting dates the seventeenth?
Uh, sixteen.
Sixteen, okay. All right, any other questions for James? Economic development.
We met on the sixteenth. We did our budgeting, we talked about, uh, direction, we looked at our overall, um, village plan to kinda set some goals for what the economic development needs to come, needs to work on since it hasn't met for so long. There's a work in progress. Our next meeting is November twentieth at five-thirty.
Uh, emergency management.
Someone showed up.
Thank you.
Well, I did.
No form.
So, yeah.
Reschedule.
Is there a, a meeting date for the reschedule yet? Okay. All right. MS Pam.
We have not met, met since our last meeting, I do know that there were two applicants to, that applied for the director. Both of them have backed out at this point. So Jim Rick is still in, he did research to get all of his licensing back, he's gonna continue to do until we find someone and we meet this Thursday at six-thirty.
Okay, any questions for Pam? Gateway to the drip list, Tyler. You're on?
Yep, I am on, uh, we met October twenty-sixth, approved a couple of small bills that they had. Uh, just reported again on the plans with the bridge and the rails to trails projects being done concurrently, so the kinda delays uh, when the bridge starts in order to get the rails to trails down to that parking lot, uh, along seventy-eight. Um, but it's overall gonna be better to not have a bridge to nowhere. Um, they are going to continue to plan to push for the trail to then continue on, they're gonna push the county, I believe it was, to push to have the trail go west out of that parking lot um, to connect closer to Mezzo for downtown. Stimulation of economic, uh, growth in Mezzo rather than a potential plan to use the road right of way and just kinda have a trail that mimics highway seventy-eight, uh, cause it'll be better overall for the village of Mezzo. Um, they're gonna try and include a gentleman, Jason Fields from Mad Rep, uh, for that purpose, uh, in the next meeting. Um, and they just reported, uh, all the villages gave updates on the, uh, approved fund, whichever approved funds for the monitoring. Um, just a little discussion about that for the Black Earth Creek, um, which is Cross Plains and us and Town of Mezzo and Town of Vermont are yet to vote on that, um. I believe those are coming up this week and next week for their votes. Otherwise, next meeting is December fourteenth at nine AM.
Questions for Tyler.
So Tyler, you're talking about the gateway is actually pushing to bring the trail west closer to Mezzo.
Yeah, the, the goal, the goal is to link it up to the Wolf Run Trail.
And is Gateway trying to involve at all coming from Cross Plains to Black Earth or Black Earth to Mezzo?
Yes, they, they are, yes, so there are some subcommittees that have been approved in previous meetings um, that are looking to identify how the Wolf Run Trail then gets connected to Black Earth as well. And it's just that there's multiple property owners in between the high school and Black Earth as opposed to like a single entity they would have to deal with. Um, so there's, and there's a railroad crossing, uh, that's involved and so there's, but yes, the ultimate goal is to connect that trail through Mezzo, Mezzo to the Wolf, or the Wolf Run Trail, Wolf Run Trail going all the way to Cross Plains, so. Or somehow all of those getting connected, that's the ultimate goal.
Thank you. Any other questions? Right now, the library board, Sarah.
I was actually absent for the last meeting on November first, I'll just punt to Bailey if that's okay for Director.
That's fine, we'll go right into the library director report, Bailey.
Um, so our last regular meeting was on October seventeenth, and then we also met on October twenty-fourth and November first. Um, the twenty-fourth was in order to hear a presentation from a fundraising consultant, um, just to give us a proposal and what to expect from a fundraising feasibility study. Um, and then November first was to approve the budget. Um, and see, um, I was absent at the last village board meeting because I was that in director booth next the third and fourth. Um, they haven't done one of those. So it was in Marshfield, um, so very luxurious, um, but they did presentations on freedom and HR and things like that. Information, so that was very helpful. Um, we had a successful local author's fair with over twenty attendees, um, which is pretty. Um, and I also did a coffee with a cop from. Um, that went really well. Um, I did a conference and did a presentation at the conference a couple of weeks ago. And then we also approved our Thanksgiving hours, uh, so we'll be closed the Friday and Saturday after Thanksgiving, just to give our staff anyways. Um, it'll be an unpaid holiday, which they're all aware of, but, um, usually super busy on those days anyway, so it makes more sense to. Um, in terms of things coming up, um, we're beta testing an e-newsletter, which will be rolling out in twenty twenty-four. Um, so I was hoping to add all of your, uh, village um, email addresses to that, so that you'd be able to, um, get the library news here in March and see what's going. Um, I can add you as early as today. Um, we're also doing a winter reading challenge for adults starting in January. Um, and we've got a movie night coming up on the fifteenth of, uh, and then an adult craft night on the thirtieth of November, and the silent art auction starts next.
That's the movie night?
What are you showing?
The fashion class.
Any questions for Bailey? Thank you Bailey. Uh, public works, Scott.
I'm going to defer over to Matt, cause I didn't have a copy of the minutes.
Parks, uh, we met Monday, October twenty-third, um, Vanguard gave their updates reports, which we've kind of heard from Sean. Talked about generator stuff, um, maintenance costs, which we've already talked about in the budget stuff that we did, um. Our country was present online, um, the things that was talked about with them was our water system study master plan, uh, they were waiting for the wells to be pulled to finalize that, I did get a call the day that, on Thursday, CTW's gonna come in and we start working on getting it off. Um, talked about road improvement plans, um, and some other grant funding, stuff like that. Uh, Public Works did approve for the ROV, so basically a robotic inspection of our tower. That was done last Monday, so that report should be coming in hopefully soon. Um, talked about chip stealing, what was done this year, what needed to be done for future. Uh, sidewalk maintenance, I'm sure you guys have seen guys without grinding nose, so that should be wrapping up soon with our sidewalk project, um, building maintenance. Uh, for this bill building, uh, Scott kind of oversaw and approved the painting situation, I think you got any critiquing done with painting, right? Everything was good, okay? Um, we just talked about some stuff that may need, need to be done in the future for this building. We find these signs, we're one of the things for EDC, um, there were some issues with those, so we chatted about those. Um, and just talked a little bit about budget as well for water sewer. Uh, update for us and Public Works has kind of been, just leaves have been crazy, uh, last week we had two guys stuck in leaves, guy sitting in the sweeper, guy hauling compost, it was just kinda a lot of leaves last week, actually had a phone call coming from the public of why we are sweeping the streets so much, so I look at that as a plus. Sweeper's out, it's doing its job. Um, bathrooms. What's that?
Not the weirdest call.
Uh, we have both park bathrooms closed down just because of the temperatures, uh, we do try to get to Halloween, but it didn't work this year. Um, the ball field project was totally wrapped up, we did assist a little bit with that, um. And all, yeah, just any questions?
Did you, did the leaf, did that break down?
We had some, uh, technical difficulties with that today, so it was a couple hours of diagnosing and getting that figured out, uh, a little bit in action.
Oh, you are back in action, okay.
That was a little.
There's been a lot of leaves though.
Yeah, yep, so, fingers crossed that it keeps going.
Yeah. All right, any other questions for Matt? Thanks man, um, Parks, Mitch?
No parks since the last board meeting. The next Public Works meeting is gonna be.
Oh, I'm sorry.
November thirteenth.
Yeah, clear math.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Um, the question I had, maybe this was more of an invoice question, but Danny, all of the parts all field projects was art, correct? I, I look at that, that came over.
So then that private donation that came in, the anonymous donation that came in was not put anywhere towards fixing that field?
Well, it's not because it was already.
Because it was already done, right, it was already set up and everything, so that's just sitting out there waiting for the fall damage.
Waiting for.
Okay, I just know that there's more work that needs to be done over there, so. Okay. Okay, Police Committee, has not met, we are scheduled to meet next Wednesday, eleven fifteen.
At eleven fifteen?
No, it's the date, eleven, November thirteenth. Sorry. Uh, five thirty. Yes, five thirty. The date is eleven fifteen, the time is five thirty.
Okay. I would entertain a motion into closed session.
I would make that motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Stat nineteen point eight five, turn one, turn C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, performance evaluation of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Dan County Sheriff's Department Contract Employee Wages Benefits, Front Office Staffing Receptionist Administrative Assistant Position.
Thank you.
Local vote.
Right, yeah.
Somewhere here.
Ames.
Ames, Coyle, what, yes. Here, here, no. Yeah, yeah.
Capet.
Yes.
Pam was right.
Yeah. Yes.
Tyler, my friend.
Yes.
Mitch, how?
Yes.
Okay.
Everyone?
Bye.
Hey, Matt.
Thank you.
For anything, right?
Yeah, a little bit.